Recording in progress.
First item on our agenda is the roller call.
Mr. Slade.
And here.
Mr. Cole.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
And Commissioner Hakkinen is absent.
You. Uh, next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from March twentieth twenty twenty four last month. Any questions, clarification, comments on the minutes from last month?
Uh, page seven of eight of the minutes. Uh, towards the top of the page, there's the motion and then it says to pass three to zero, should be three to two.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I have one, um, clarification, I guess I wanted on page three of eight. Uh, the second paragraph from the bottom, uh, says Commissioner Hakkinen. Hakkinen clarified that the maximum height of twenty-three, uh, five is measured from the top of the foundation. Um, it was always my understanding that that was from, the, the measurement was from the median graded. Uh, and not necessarily from the top of the foundation of height.
So that was typically on what was measured on the plans and how it was measured on the plans. Um, the, in terms of the height limit in the city code, yeah, it's from the average ground.
Okay, I just want to thank you. Any other comments? Your motion to approve? Proves. Move the second, I guess we should have public comment, but seeing none. All papers say aye.
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 Those. That's just unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next item is approval of the, the agenda. We have, um. Three items for hearing, discussion, decision, action this evening. Uh, any questions, comments, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
I don't too.
Second, move the second, any further discussion? A public discussion, all papers say aye.
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 Unanimously. Okay, we're moving right along. Um, item on the agenda is items from the floor. This is an opportunity for anyone, uh, in the, uh, in the public. Would like to address the, uh, planning commission on any subject other than those that are on the agenda this evening.
I've got a couple of items.
Sorry.
Let me handle you. Um, the first item was that's. Construction is well underway on the, the water pipeline. And so I went back and looked at our approval of those permits and noted that we unanimously recommended that they. Uh, screen the staging area. I guess both up on the hill where the tanks have been replaced and behind Murphy's and we'll note that that hasn't happened. So I wanted to express some disappointments, uh, about those recommendations. Unanimously approved by the planning commission, but followed. And one, and two is that slowly but surely, um, I'm working my way through Trinidad municipal code. And noticed that, uh, the mayor is an exesential member of the planning commission, which I assume is, you know, largely symbolic. But also I think that it would also be largely symbolic if the mayor attended meetings, especially where we're discussing trail closures, just to. Accessibility and. More seamless understanding of what's happening in planning commission meetings. I think. I think we can come down here to a day with the encouraged staff and the chair of this committee to encourage the mayor to attend those types of meetings.
I kind of, I, uh, you know, like this afternoon about the screening and, um, I think he. Just read it. With the contractor, Mr. Fraser, and they moved some screening, I believe.
Thank you, Chris. Um, any other public comment?
Uh, I guess. I'll go back. I don't know, I'm not allowed to, but maybe it's just an aside. All the questions that are on are showing that they passed three to zero, but they're five.
Yeah, that. Yep. That's a good catch. Uh, well, let's see. That actually, the first one is correct because, well, no, it is, because Hakkinen and Hopkins abstain. So, uh, so that should be three and two abstentions. For the first one, approval of minutes. Am I correct in that? Right, okay.
Oh, yeah.
And then.
It's approval of three, five, zero, right?
And, uh, that's correct. That should be five, two.
I guess the other two, or the other ones is correct, being three, zero.
Not four, is it?
Well, it's. And I think. I think we still say casually unanimously with the next abstentions, because it was, uh. Was, uh, oh. Uh, we should know that there are two abstentions or two recusals, the four, the two.
Yeah, that is a, yes, great, thank you.
The word is five, five, zero. That's probably.
That one's correct.
So we will, um. I think for, for approval of minutes, I think that's okay. Um, approval of the agenda, five, so. And then I'll note the two recusals on. I didn't turn them two and looks. Motion for the three, two.
Okay. Great, thank you for the catch, yeah. Okay, so the most, uh, the minutes are, uh, I don't think we need another motion, but approved as amended. Any issues with that? Okay. All right, moving on then to our agenda items. Uh, the first agenda item is, uh, monthly update on the Axel Lingui. Memorial Trail Trail Closure in Progress to Do, to Date to reopen the trail.
Well. It was, uh. Was the city, the city staff met with, uh, trying to meet. Team on April third, and where the. And that, uh, the local members, uh, believed of where the, the action agency and the ancestral society requested that they be there. Um, and to provide an estimate. To work for, um, constructing the realignment, um. And the ancestral society presented a plan for sort of a short-term temporary opening of the trail within this, this realignment, so, um. It's not exactly yet a new alignment, which is why I'm saying realignment, because it follows the traditional pathway of, of what was. The traditional trail there. Um, and. But the work, at this point, the work would be the necessary just to get the trail open. Um, I guess it looks like the, the GHD report had a number of recommendations for. Um, other work to be done to the trail, and a handrail has longed and. Sire to help keep people on the trail and off the trail. Um, there's probably. You know, a, a bridge over wet area that will be needed eventually. Right now, we're talking about planks. Put over there that people can get across. And then there also may need to be something. To help people get down to the beach more easily, but I think. Still. Scramble down in the new location. So that's what we were, we talked about at the management team meeting, um. And so the work would primarily involve, um, just vegetation, remember, we also met at the site on April eighth. Um, but at that point, the, the trail was too overgrown to walk down it, um, so couldn't go down. Plus, the vegetation is very thick down there. Got into sort of a climate anyway, um, so. But we did talk about, um, you know, likely the work that we all sort of settled. You know, I have the works here of the trail, so you can get down there now. RCA did visit it from autumn. Um, and then they are working on scheduling another visit with the ancestral society. City staff and RCA will probably cut into the vegetation a little bit so that they can get a look at the conditions. So, so that is, is in progress, and I think it's promising progress.
Hey, thank you. Questions, comments on the commissioners?
Uh, well, I'm pleased to see that there's. Uh, that this temporary isolation. Works, but visibly in the works at this point. Uh. It looks pretty straightforward. Is, is there a. Estimate for when that project might actually come? Or commission?
Um, no, I think we're waiting to get sort of a quote from RCA in terms of what we're. Done. Expect that next.
And last night I heard that the city might be helping out a little bit for RCA.
Yeah, I mean, the cost is certainly another, um, consideration, so, um, you know, I don't think that. The coastal conservancy would have funding for this, this temporary reopening, but Eli was going to look at, um, the city council had been putting. Money aside in a trails fund for trail maintenance that haven't been being used over the last few years. I think he's going to look at that and, and talk to them. They're working on the budget now, so it would be the time to, to do that, so I think. Probably have to be the city in the short term.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess it. So the, currently, we're just waiting on the quote or estimate from RCA. All the other stakeholders are good with the assumption.
Yeah. At least on the management team.
Well, that, that, yeah, if you could clarify that, I mean, I. Are we really waiting for a, uh, an estimate from RCA or is this good to go? Uh, that, that's what my impression was earlier that. RCA had been tasked to do the job, so I assume that there was some sort of understanding in place.
No, there's still a contract in place. It's just the, the ancestral society has, um, requested them to. You know, make time in their schedule and provide an estimate and a scope for the work. And I think we need the, we need the scope in order to process the permit. And we need the estimate for the city to figure out that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Clarifications, comments? Right now, I'll ask for public comment on this agenda item. And seeing none, then, uh, thank you for the update. I'm anxious to hear more in the near future. Next item on our agenda is a monthly update on the Van Wood Trail Closure Progress to, uh, to date on reopening it.
What trail, okay, so, uh, uh, so the progress on this one, uh, I will say when we met on April eighth at the site. Um, at the excellent memorial trail, we also walked down to. In which trail with, with, um. Sarah Ling and other, and they're across, figure out a trial, um, to kind of look at the condition of the trail and, you know, where a, a, a slope trail might go. So we didn't really talk details, but we did go, go look at the site and, and then staff presented. At the city council meeting, a summary of all various options that, that staff has discussed over the past six months or seven months since the September. Coastal Commission hearing and kind of presented, um, some, some pros and cons of, of each of the options and, um. His recommendations and asked city council for further direction, um, and. Some of the direction, I think we need to provide, the city council is a different city council and will stay there in twenty seventeen, we may. Previous repair. So I think we're going to provide a, a little bit of a, a summary of the history and the options that we looked at back then, because some of those kind of came up. And, um. I think the council was particularly interested in the up slope trail option. Um, there was no interest in making improvements on Edward Street. Um, the, I think, staff recommendation is that would be the thing to do anyway. Um. And one of the property owners was there and spoke a little bit, and I think. One of the things that came out of that is. There's a little bit different idea of what those up slope. Property owners may be envisioning and, and what the ancestral society might, might be envisioning, so, um. But I think we're going to maybe look at a couple of. People that I asked. To ask, uh, GHD to, to come up with a couple of design options and, and then. Start that discussion with the TAS and the property owners about what, what that might look like, I mean. You know, figure out if that's a, a non-starter or something that, that is a realistic option, um, so. That's.
Okay, thank you. Uh, comments, questions from the commissioners? Is this work that's being done in the middle of the road going to affect that water pipe that goes through there?
Yes, um, the work in the middle of the road is going to eliminate the water pipe. But not, but the, the gravity storm drain, um. There's not a lot of options for that storm drain.
Okay, so that's, that's there and it's going to stay there, but that doesn't really make a trail. That just kind of empties out, makes a, makes a creek, basically.
Yeah, I mean, the city, um, was looking at an option to maybe place that on the nine beam. I mean, the concern is that if the slope moves. And the pipe breaks, that it's going to contribute to additional slope. Um, so that's a, that's a real worry, um. And so the city has looked at some options, but again, ground disturbance is, is an issue, um. You know, we looked at, we had some funding left over from swamp water project, and, um, so they were looking at putting the. Spinning, uh, the failed stretch with a, with nine beam, basically. Um, but the water board, in order to qualify for the grant, it needed to improve stormwater quality, which meant some sort of treatment chamber, which then meant. A lot of ground, so, um, so we, we explored that option and including with the, with the management team, but. Yeah. And, and, and I mean, we have looked at other options for it, um. You know, one option would be a home station at, at, at the bottom there where the trail is filled. But the city doesn't mean have, you know, the populations and doesn't maintain that, and then it would require, you know, probably a generator, a backup power. Um, and those sorts of things, so that's complicated. And then the other option would be to take it down a slope to the beach, uh, but that's also probably not feasible, because that would be a disruption to the ASB, so. A lot, not a lot of great options.
Would there be any way to, like, a, a permaculture type situation where you sit rocks, where it's going into some kind of, uh. With a, a gable or even a, a gap, whatever, with, with rocks are in it, and that would help with a trail? To improve the stormwater situation and maybe provide some base for something?
Um, I, another option that, that we looked at was infiltration, and, you know, we looked at the volumes of stormwater, but, um, you know, based on the city's groundwater model and, and geotech reports. Um, GHD did not recommend any infiltration.
So they, they're saying just let the pipe run as opposed to putting something to kind of slow the water down?
We could, uh, well, I mean, you can potentially slow the water down, um, and maybe treat it or something on its way through, but there. They would not recommend infiltrating. And.
That pipe's going all the way down to the harbor.
Yes, yeah, so it currently connects into the storm drain system at Lindo and then down to.
Oh, I thought it was just opening right there, it was going straight out.
There is. Um, it does, it does exit the pipe, but I think, um, it ends up back in the drain and let that act a little bit.
Just, you mean it comes out of the pipe into another drain?
Yeah, there's sort of a. You know, more like a, a ditch kind of that goes across people, people's driveways there that can raise that storm, stormwater.
You know what they do on scenic drive when it slides? Is build more up, you just keep adding to it.
Some areas, they don't even do that, though.
Uh, maybe we could use local rock, then we're. They can, they can get more stable, I don't know.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I mean. I don't know how much they looked at something like that, um, when we did the repair, I know putting weight on it, you know, might be a two. It's a, not a simple fix.
But technically, it's that the, it's the city council for, for them to work on.
Yes, I think.
They're just getting a report, we're not really doing anything. So people listen to this, and who to talk to, it's the city council.
That's right, and it.
And you should, I've heard you, you made good points.
It will be agenda is on their future meetings until there is a resolution.
I think, didn't they just decide to put it on the consent agenda, effort? That. Maybe that was the other trail.
Yes, I think Axel Linggrin can be on consent, and that's, it has been, and, and just sort of in Eli's staff reports. Where I think this was made clear that it has to be agenda, so. And I'll work with Gabe on that every month. So I've been misunderstood.
Well, even if it winds up on the consent agenda, member of the public can request that it removed and placed on the agenda, so. They can.
Which I guess, yeah, you said it would just be agenda, right? I guess we have it in the minutes. Which could mean consent, but yeah, someone could pull it, but that would mean it's its own agenda, I don't think, it's not just part of Eli's staff report. Yeah, I, you're, no, I think it probably could be consent, um, it just have to be, but it would have to be its own.
Other comments, questions?
I'd like to seek some clarification. Just now you mentioned there was absolutely no interest in the Edward Street alternative in your staff reports, and with not much of current interest. I just wanted to say that's. I know that's fully accurate, right? Like, we. Received a bunch of comments from the public that said Edward Street was not acceptable alternative. Several of us on this committee said that Edward Street was not an acceptable alternative. And I was curious whether there was. Any, I mean. It's clear there's no interest in, but it seems like there was quite a bit of opposition to Edward Street. I don't know if that was true, we think it went to council or just current?
I guess. I mean, I, obviously, there's opposition to Edwards being the alternative, though at some point, I'm not sure there's going to be a choice. And. But I think most people are worried that if there are improvements on Edwards, then Van Wood will fall to the wayside, and. You know, I think for staff, right now, the trail is closed. There is no safe way for the public to get from town to the harbor, and it's important. That that access be provided. Locals and this, so that staff's strong recommendation is that the city pursue. Treatments on Edwards that don't preclude anything happening in the way. So. Need, you know, it's, so, you know, maybe I interpreted it, um, not as opposition, because. I just think it's a no-brainer, but, um. So maybe that was my. Yes.
I can go back and look at the minutes, but did council members voice opposition to Edward Street, or did they just not voice support for it?
I think it was not voice support.
I don't know, I, I guess, having been at the meeting, I got the impression that there was more interest in Edwards than. Just nothing at all.
I think there's interest in an eventual sidewalk or something like that, but there didn't seem to be any discussion about any short-term, let's do something this summer.
Oh, well, oh, okay, so the overall plan for Edwards, I think, I guess that's what I refer.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say there was some interest in. Like I said, eventually having a sidewalk, but, but not that much.
I mean, just because I'm not necessarily nitpicking Edward Street, I was just curious, I wasn't that meeting, whether there was in fact opposition or just a lack of support. It's like, there is, there is some amount of support.
Yeah, I mean, I think. I think there, I mean, I would, I support that, but I, I think like Trevor said. There, there's a lot of people that don't want that to be seen as the alternative. I think. Probably most people would support some kind of improvements on Edward Street in general, but. In the, in this context of talking about the Van Wood Trail, I think people are hesitant to want to talk about that, because it can easily be disconserved as, as an alternative. But like, if that was like a separate agenda item that wasn't in this context, it would probably be well supported, I would, I would support it, for sure.
I, I, yes, I think that's a good explanation, um, I mean, I do. You know, I think there could be some potential visual impacts, or even, you know, rumble strips have noise impacts, I think there, you know, it's, there would be discussion about it, but, um. But yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't think it's necessarily opposition, it's just that. I'm going to give it.
Uh. Okay, thanks. All right, so at the council meeting. The council asked for. Council asked for some of the history regarding some of the correspondence about the cultural sensitivity there. Is there any progress on that in the past week? Or do you?
No, I think um I think Gabe was gonna start compiling some stuff. I don't know if he's if he's had a chance to do that at this point. There's we have you have a lot of material on on that. And and I think even Jackie Hostler was there, Andrea, she said she was gonna look at what she had. So. But I don't know what progress might have been made.
The other questions, comments?
Um I guess just one additional comment regarding. I mean. I think like you noted in here. City council talked a lot or about. Such solutions. To. Closure issue with the trail closed, the condition of it, whereas at our last meeting, we talked about sort of whether or not. Yes. And I'm thinking about solutions. To the to the issue. As was suggested four, whatever, five years ago. There was that large scale engineer solution, which was very unpopular. And I. Think and I I've heard other suggestions from council members that were like similar to that, like putting a big giant bridge across it or whatever. And. I guess like I want. This is obviously like an actively moving area. It's very dynamic and I think our solution needs to be really dynamic and like. An acceptable solution, in my opinion, is like one that requires frequent maintenance, you know, there's not, I don't think we're gonna find like a silver bullet where it'd be like. Do this one fix and it's good for 20 years. Like, there's probably, it's just something that you had sent out down there. Every year with a cloud or something. Or something like that. And like, maybe that could be written into. Ever gets proposed. If something does get proposed, it's that that will be expected. Because it's dynamic and we also.
Yeah, I mean, I think the the option that we looked at that would have just had it. Steps, wooden steps to the existing. Up and down. I think that sort of bit in that um but it was, you know. The the ancestral society of the York tribe wouldn't support it. Now, the city council does have the option of moving forward without any.
Yeah, right. And and like with an option like that. Like there is an expectation that the city has to maintain it. If the steps fail, we have to fix the steps and not just let it keep failing.
Yeah, because then it would become a liability issue again. Um and I think same with the, you know, if there is enough slope slope option, you know, I think we probably kind of. Have to have some sort of monitoring plan that looks at triggers for. You know, they need maintenance or close the trail.
Yeah, just piggyback by saying. In one of our recent meetings. It was the TAS's attorney told us that because of the condition of. LMT that it wouldn't just be repairing the trail at this point. It'd be like. Building a new trail, essentially. I mean, that was their language, not necessarily language I would agree with. But I think, yes, consistent maintenance would help us avoid that particular pitfall where it's so bad that it can longer be considered. Routine pains. It's a part of the CDP or something like that.
Reconstruction rather.
Your comments? There are none. I'll open it up to the public. Don't see anyone from the public here. So um tonight is to uh there's no recommended action or accept the report, we are publicly comment. And provide staff with further direction of comments, which we have done. And so thank you very much. Um, okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, item three, ADU ordinance discussion. Recommendation regarding bedroom definitions and OWTS requirements.
Um, so this is sort of an interesting issue that came up recently. Um, as I noted in the staff report, I got a call from someone about. Possibly putting in an ADU on a property that they they wanted an ADU for a long time and and the primary limiting factor besides the zoning norms was also septic. Lot. Health department would have required at least a three bedroom septic system, not. Maybe even four with a 600 square foot ADU, because currently. As sort of a factor of safety, they require a minimum of a two bedroom system for a single. Like I said, that's sort of a factor of safety for um. To avoid issues with smaller systems. Um and it's it's pretty common. I I you know, I didn't do a ton of research. Um but that is fairly common. Where, you know, the first. One, two, three bedrooms to be a certain amount. Uh and, you know, I I knew they were reviewing their regulations and I was hopeful that they would relax that to some degree for for at least JADUs, if not also ADUs. Uh but then this is sort of a complete reversal of. Not requiring any um of that sort of initial extra bedroom for an ADU. So. So in this case, with the, you know, 1300 square foot one bedroom house with a 600 square foot ADU. The health department allowed just the two bedrooms. And I I just, it sort of raised some concerns in my mind because 1300 square foot is not tiny and it seems like. Under that situation with, you know, two full residential units with with kitchens, there might well be more people living on the property. Um so I just kind of looked at um. You know, whether the city should. I I just sort of thought whether the city should maybe. We could have something stricter if warranted. And I, you know, I I think that we don't have all the information at this point. I'm trying to connect with um. Adam at the health department and more about some. One of my questions is, what did they base that decision on? Do they have studies or data that show that that's adequate? Because if not, you know, I I. I started thinking we need something that says that that's okay for Trinidad. Now, if you look at water use. That's probably okay. I think, you know, ADUs tend to use less than 100 gallons a day, so it's it's probably okay. But again, I think. You know, we we have bluff stability and saturation and water quality issues um and, you know, pretty dense development for for use of septic systems in Trinidad. And so I think. Just taking a cautious approach. For ADUs, uh you know, because we've always talked about how. Septic systems would be the limiting factor for ADUs. This would take away a lot of that. So um so I just was wanted to introduce this topic to the planning commission, see if you have any concerns. I mean, certainly we could. Um, you know, just go with with what the health department requires and do nothing. But I'm just looking for for your thoughts and and if you have any additional direction.
Thanks.
So has has the has these new regulations from DEH gone into effect or not yet?
My understanding is yes, because it's really an interpretation of the regulations. Just not in.
So in the in the previous interpretation. You had. I guess the way I read it, it says in here, until now, with few exceptions, DEH has always required an OWTS size for at least two bedrooms for each separate dwelling. Does that mean each separate dwelling had to have its own OWTS?
No, but that it would be size. So now they 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 did have an exception for like studio unit. So um. If you had a two bedroom primary unit, you could potentially just have a three bedroom system that could accommodate a small studio.
Otherwise, you would need a four bedroom system.
It could be the same.
I pulled up the old OWTS work. I didn't see any mention of accounting in there. So I'm just curious how and why the county has restriction of this.
Um, it should say in there that the environmental health is the city's health officer. So somewhere in the beginning.
So the health officer is not the city, is not the city personnel?
No, right now. So the ordinance is written so that the city could have its own health officer, but right now. Um, the city contracts with environmental health.
It's a pretty heavy lift. There's a cost for it, right? Here is the, you said you're waiting for, you know. Some DTH's rationale for this. Prepare that a ship. But it turns out it's it's sort of that policy can be pursued. Advocating sort of. Also like advocating and trying to to make sure that our feedback is heard is is one half. But is there. Possibility like returning that oversight back to the city or is that just totally based on cost for some issues?
Yeah, I think. Uh I think the the current contract with DEH might come seventies actually. Every few years we go, oh, we really need to update that. Um, and so in terms of roles, responsibilities, you know, we've had some issues with enforcement, like who who is responsible for enforcement, for example. Um, so I think that it would be good to clear clarify the contract. Um, but I think. So I I wouldn't recommend that the city hire its own health officer. I don't think a dedicated health officer. Is necessary. We may be part time, I suppose, but probably you know, it would have to be a a registered environmental health. Specialists or whatever the the certification is. So I think we could, I think it would be fine to continue to work with environmental health. I think they're, you know, they're great. I think they're very knowledgeable. And they're also very flexible too. I think it's nice to have enough experience to to be flexible with with systems, especially with repairs and things. Um, but but the city, I think we could specify in our contract or in our regulations that. Something a little bit different, more strict than their regulations.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the reason I'm asking all of those questions, it's first out of my table. Secondly, because I mean. The ordinance lays out pretty clearly all of the roles of the the health officer and if indeed we'll just contact him that out. I feel like we should still have. Some say, all seen this. What's happening is the object you're representing, but if you want to just have it, I think that policy in Virginia. Was the correct policy. I'm certainly have to comply with what they do.
That's right, yeah.
I watched a dog two days ago down on State Beach. Drink water from one thing and go to this other brown look of water that was coming out of the hill and wouldn't drink that water. And I kind of went, hmm, that's interesting. But, you know, it's just could be just water coming out of the hill. I'm sure it's tested and all that. But they do testing regular on the beach and they find that it's got high. High high levels, but that's coming from the creek, baby.
Yeah, so um and and actually Mill Creek was previously listed on as an impaired water body. It's been taken off the list. So, yeah, so nor so. The the summer beach testing that environmental health does is at the mouths of the creeks. So they do do their sample scan. Um, the standard that they compare it to is contact, contact recreations. We have done more substantial testing over the years in. You know, in the creeks and tributaries, not the creeks and in a number of the seeps and in some groundwater. Yeah. Call form is is difficult, though. Um, you know, it's it's everywhere in the environment. So I mean, unless you're really getting it directly from. A pristine spring, it's gonna have. Call form in it. Um, springs due to and groundwater are much. What what we've measured in the past. I don't think there's been any sampling done in. For years, there's been any. But it was definitely um surface water was where the real issue was.
I maybe uh. If there was a way at the septic to. You know, some kind of pump to grind it up or to to uh aerate it or. Um, something to make the system better. Might be a possibility.
There are there um there are pretreatment units, so um a a standard system. Is is good at removing bacteria. Um, they're not necessarily real good at removing nitrates and phosphates. And so usually. Um, that's what a pretreatment would be for is to do the. Exactly how it works.
So I was kind of noodling on this and I had a question that I don't know. I I don't know the answer. Maybe you can help me out. So in Trinidad. We. You know, we have minimum lot size. I know that. And we arbitrarily divide the properties up into these little blocks. And then we say, okay, you can put your leach fields here. Or you could put it over here, depending upon, you know, how the. Property is laid out. And then when I started thinking about it, I know for the fact that there are several places that one leach field. Is absolutely right next to the next leach field. Even though there might be a property one in between. So when we talk about uh this whole idea of of whether or not it's a two bedroom or a three bedroom system. If you have two leach fields that are essentially right on top of each other. What's the impact there? And and do the normal definitions of a two bedroom or three bedroom system even fit for that? I mean, to me, you're dumping twice as much affluent into the same location. And are we not creating a much more serious problem or? Migration of of wastewater, et cetera.
Yeah, I I think that, I mean, I would say that if you imagine that the water line wasn't there and you had two houses and they shared a leach field, it would be the same. Thing as long as the leach field was sized for how much water, because they do have to be. Uh leach lines have to be separated from each other by 10 feet. So I would imagine that the two fields are at least 10 feet. So it'd almost be like just having more leach lines for our order system. And and I would say, you know, I think. Certainly the the Laco report that's that was prepared for the charity management plan, um, you know, it it brought up. Um, septic systems as a as a major contributing factor for slope sat saturation, stability. Um, you know, how, you know, I'm not, I I think that some of that's a little bit anecdotal. Yeah, because we also are are. Winter time, at at least in the winter time. For slope stability, because and we're also diverting a lot of slope rainfall that hits the ground. for slope stability, because, and we're also diverting a lot of slope rainfall that hits the ground. And I'm not sure we've really looked at how that balances out, but, um. Yeah, I think Trinidad's soils are, are very good. And, you know, I think if a system is built to current standards and it's sized appropriately, you know, it's probably fine. Um, you know, I think the, you know, the LACO report talked about, did talk about closely spaced leach fields, but I think it was mostly concerned with undersized leach fields where you're, you know, it's more of a point source instead of spreading that effluent out over a larger area. You're all, you're docking it into, um, you know, too small.
So, um, okay, that, that makes me feel a little bit better. Um, and, you know, kind of moving on to looking at the possible actions that you asked us to look at. Uh, I'll just throw out my, my thoughts and certainly everybody else can, I don't. We reach a consensus, but nevertheless, um, I, um, certainly don't like the idea of do nothing. I think that, that's ridiculous. And, and the requirement that we currently have that a primary dwelling have at least a two bedroom OWTS certainly makes sense. I kind of like the idea that, uh, number four, to have a minimum OWTS sizing requirements based on the square footage of the development. Um, and the reason I'm kind of thinking about that is because, um, even though someone may purchase a piece of property and say, oh, it's a two bedroom. They go in and they say, ah, here's an opportunity where I can tear out a wall, take out the closet, take out the bookshelves and I have another bedroom. And, and I, I know that happens. I think I've done it myself, but, um, I, I think that, yeah, there should be some sort of, uh, criteria where there is some uh, effort to size it based on the total, uh, square footage of the property. And then to me, it also, and, and we haven't talked about it yet, but when we get into the definition of the bedrooms, um, I think it has to be kind of a combination of square footage and how you define a bedroom. Uh, does, y'all know that people try to skirt the laws sometimes and, uh, it's very easy to convert um, a room to a bedroom. And of course, then that probably could mean more residents. So I've just been thinking that, uh, I was thinking of some sort of combination of the three middle ones that you, that you, uh, have put down there as option. Uh, another question I guess would be, uh, was at first I was thinking, what do other cities in the county do? Then I realized I don't think there's a city in the county that uses, uh, OWTS, maybe Rio Del, but I'm not sure.
There will, there are parts of cities. I'm in the city limits of Arcata and I'm on a septic system. And Arcata used to contract with DEH up until maybe 10 years ago. Now they, now they do it themselves, but they have very, they have very few systems. But there's probably, I bet Erika has some on some, on the parts of town.
Okay, okay.
So I can look at what others do locally. I, I looked more at what other larger, um,
Yeah, I think that would be useful information just to see if we are consistent with other cities and areas of the county. And, um, and just to clarify what, uh, I think Chris was talking about. If we decided on uh, uh, rules or regulations that were more stringent than what the county enforces would under the contract that we have with DTH, would they enforce our requirements or would they revert back to their requirements?
That would be a good discussion to have with them. And I think it would be another, um, you know, reason to, to re- renew that contract, um, revise that contract. Um. My understanding is that they would enforce the city's rules as long as it's if, even if it was less stringent, I'm, I'm not sure. But, but my understanding is they would enforce them. Well, they could. I mean, certainly if it was.
So I've got, I've got the OWTS ordinance, it's printed out and, um, Officer Coggi enforces Trinidad's sewage disposal regulations. It seems to me like we can create regulations as they should. Ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think right now we just default to the county's regulations.
But I think that's a.
For, for citing them as well.
Yeah, but depending upon which direction we agree to go, then that would be a very important issue to get understanding.
I mean, there has been, for example, um, there's been at least a couple of repairs where, um, you know, the application, they'll, they'll send me a referral for a repair and they don't have any permit requirements, but I've said, oh, well, that means a permit. Or there was one where the repair was for three bedrooms. And I said, hmm, that's not, the city doesn't recognize three bedrooms on that, on that. So they, they changed it to two bedrooms. Repair. Now repair is just what room there is in the lot. So I mean, it was a small, just small lot, I mean. So they do, they.
May I ask, you use the phrase, uh, higher strength wastewater? Is that volume or cell concentration?
It's the organic matter. So from your kitchen, kitchen waste is higher, um, or the system has to work more to.
So just to be clear, but it's really the fact that ADUs can now have kitchens in them that is the most problematic?
Part, part of it. That's part of it. So that's part of why that extra factor of safety. You know, I don't, I don't necessarily think that, you know, a, a one bedroom residence with a one bedroom ADU should have a four bedroom septic system, but, um. But it's also, um, you know, the potential from more people as, as well.
Man, I would just say that, you know, if, if kitchens sort of really are the most demanding aspect of wastewater treatment, then we should probably address kitchens rather than sort of making interpretations about how people do or don't use their, you know, preferences. Maybe we should focus on, well, getting this whole kitchen regulation back in policy.
I think we do, we did go through and define kitchens and wet bars. I think that was sort of the intent with a JADU can't have a full kitchen. Um, and so, you know, people aren't going to be cooking Christmas dinners in a JADU. Um. And so it's, it's basically sort of limited to that. And, and when someone, you know, has, and that's how you've sort of kept things from becoming real ADUs is by limiting, you know, the kitchen appliances. They can, so we, we do do that currently.
My point was that, I mean, if, if kitchens are producing this higher strength wastewater, it's probably better to address kitchens rather than, you know, making assumptions about bedrooms sort of being kitchen equivalents, right? Like if the issue is really truly the fact that ADUs will have kitchens and they're producing higher strength wastewater, it's probably more relevant to discuss kitchens than, you know, how many gallons per day a bedroom uses, when in fact the bedroom is probably using a fraction of the total water that they ADUs are using.
I think, I think it's both because I think it's also the potential number of people that are living on the property and how much water they're using. But yeah, I mean, I think if, you know, you could say, well, okay, so you can have a one bedroom ADU with just a one bedroom septic system if it doesn't have a full kitchen. I think that's one, one thing you could, you could do. So for this example that I got a call about, you know, I think, yeah, they, they, they might have a sink in there and a hot plate and a microwave and something else. So, you know, you can say, well, you can't have a kitchen, but you can on your instance. So that might be an option. But I also think that, you know, depending on the configuration of the rooms and the size of the house, you know, is it really just going to be two people living in a barefoot house? Maybe, but also I think it's, it's likely that it could be more. Or not unlikely that it could be.
Uh, I mean, one thing I was thinking about in regard to this, what you were just saying is, I guess I would think about the demographics of the people that live in Trinidad. And while not all the septic systems in town are adequately sized for the number of bedrooms in all the houses and nor are all the septic systems in town functioning perfectly, I would, I don't think that very, there are very many houses in town that are like at max capacity for a number of residents. Like I don't think there's a lot of, there's probably some, I don't think there's a lot of like big families with, whether it's four kids or like multi-generational families all living in one house. And so my guess is that if we had a, if, if the residence has a properly sized septic for the number of stated bedrooms in the town, city of Trinidad, it's probably not being used to its fullest capacity in most cases. Um, there's definitely going to be. So obviously, you know, someone can sell their house and a big family can move in behind them that sees all of, all these offices as potential bedrooms. Um, but that, I mean, it just doesn't seem like there's that many people like that in cities. So I guess I wasn't like, I think it's easy to get concerned about, oh, someone's just going to convert this into a bedroom and put three kids in there. Like I just don't see that actually happening very often in, in the city, but but it is, it's certainly like a potential threat. Um. And I guess like in the example that you gave, that these people have this large house that's one bedroom with a dining room that may or may not be a bedroom. I mean, it's probably not a bedroom. I feel like, I mean, there's so many people in this town. It's just like an older couple who live in a three bedroom house, you know? Uh, or in this case, I don't know who these people are, but probably just two people who live in a big one bedroom house. Um. But I guess I, I'm not super concerned about like um, us overtaxing our wastewater systems. If they're properly functioning, I guess. And I think that's the real key is that there's a lot of systems that are just not properly functioning. And given, I guess, and thinking about like these different actions that you've put forward, I appreciate the, I guess, creativity or different ways of thinking about it, uh, that you came up with. I personally, I don't really want to like get into the weeds of like how we're going to define a bedroom. Like Richard said, it's pretty easy to change. Something, pull out some bookcases, bookshelves and it's not an office anymore. Um. But I can sympathize with, with the idea of wanting apps in the next trip. Like I guess despite whatever, everything I just said, like wanting to have a little extra play in our, uh, OWTS capacity. So I think. I was personally at the options, I, I like the second option, which is sort of the old option. And I think we could put some exceptions on that for like JADUs or, uh, ADUs with minimal kitchens or something like that, like, like, like you said. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think I worry about getting into the weeds of defining a bedroom as well. Um, certainly the, the second or, um, four options would be the simplest, um, to implement. Are they the fairest? You know, I, I don't know. Um, and, and you are right. You know, I think the, the household size in, in Trinidad is just over two people. So, you know, I think, I think when you're, when you start talking about three and four bedroom systems, I, I'm not that concerned because you're right. You're not going to fill up a four bedroom house with eight people. That's not likely. But if that's more of a one or two bedroom size, um, or two one bedrooms, then I worry a little more, which is, you know, the idea of the factor of safety. Um. I, the, the household size has gone up over the last few years. Um. That trend will continue. I don't know. But would you like to live in Trinidad and if they can afford to do it by having more people in the house?
Yeah, you have a house that's doing great, but then right next door you got an STR and it's blowing up every other weekend and with, with a bunch of people. I think Aaron on the side of caution is, is good.
I mean, you know, and maybe, um, it's, you know, I, I haven't looked at how many, you know, there, there is a provision in the ADU ordinance where if a system wasn't originally engineered or was engineered more than 10 years ago, you could require new per testing and assessment if the leach field's big enough. Maybe, you know, I think that, that would is probably a, you know, something that would a lot of ADUs would, would require, um, currently if we just make sure we implement that. Uh, I, I wasn't really thinking we'd implement that very often, but I think with this new health department role, we would, because we have that option. Um. Maybe that's enough. I don't know. And that's sort of why I was saying, I feel like I sort of lack data on things.
So it's, it's always been my understanding that, that the OWTS ordinance uh, is essentially performance driven. Meaning that in my mind, what it means is that you get tested three, three, five years. And your system either is working or it isn't working. So in my mind, that, if that's the criteria, it's a basic criteria, then whether I have two bedrooms or four bedrooms, if the system is operating as it should and I can get a permit every three to five years, do I really care how many bedrooms I have or how many kitchens I have or how many ADUs I have? I mean, that's another way of looking at it.
Yeah. It is, I think, one thing that um, I think about with that is how sandy the soils are in Trinidad. And so I'm not sure. And I, I think in the town proper, you're never going to see it surfacing effluent, even if the system's failing. And unless your leach lines are totally clogged with something, the effluent's going to go into the ground. And so you're going to pass the test, even if you're not getting proper treatment.
So that, that, that I guess is what I, I keep missing is, um, how, how, how do you know whether a system is actually working when you do a, uh, you know, when you go for a permit then?
You know, I think, you know, from talking to DEH, I mean, in, in town, soils are practically ideal. You don't get better soils than in Trinidad. Um. Because you also have a large separation ground. So even though it's going, it's moving through the soil quickly, it takes it a while to get to the groundwater. Um, but again, I think, I think you start to have issues if Um, but again, I think, I think you start to have issues if. You don't have enough leach line, and so it's just running down in one location as opposed to being spread out over the proper area. Um, which is where, you know, making sure that those older systems. Proper engine. Size appropriately, maybe that's enough.
Well, now I am confused. Because, um. I I guess I still don't quite understand then. Uh, from what you've just said, it sounds like I could have a system which continues to meet all the requirements, but is still failing. And I would never know that.
I wouldn't say it's failing, I wouldn't need the definition of failing. But you'd have to, you know, be monitoring groundwater to know if it's, you're getting proper adequate treatment.
Well, we do have test wells all around, don't we? Don't we look at groundwater?
Test wells, yeah.
Are we monitoring groundwater, or is that?
Not what now.
Not anymore, hmm. So. Okay. Guess I'm still confused. But, I mean, I'll I'll figure that one out, I guess, um. I guess what what I was trying to get at is that there, is there some way which we can kind of redirect the whole idea of. Bedrooms versus. Number of bedrooms versus size of system, some sort of. Criteria that we already have in place, like the O W T S ordinance, but I I guess I'm not hearing that that's quite there yet.
And, you know. Maybe it's not cause for concern.
I'm sorry.
Maybe this change is not a cause for concern, it does, again, that's sort of where I feel like. I'm. I don't have the data to make a determination, I just want to hear your opinions on it. Figuring out. Should we dive into this more, um? Not concerned, I don't.
Uh, yes.
And get test the wells in the summertime, right?
We could, I mean, if the city's gonna, you know, spend staff time and budget doing that. I think we can make them.
I'm not sure that that necessarily isolates down to. Uh, individual systems that we would be interested in knowing about.
No, but we could, you know, if the. You know, the city could say, okay, well, we're gonna monitor groundwater wells, and if we see an increase in. You know, comments, then then we'll implement some new rules.
You you did say at the beginning of the meeting that there is some money left over in the stormwater.
There was, the brand is done now.
Okay, I would have been able to use that money, just actually sampling from those.
As I recall that, um, when we were doing the samples, and I. Might be confusing with the A W of A S B S, but that got really expensive. I'm thinking of A S B S.
Yes, yeah, I think, you know, the ocean sampling in particular was very rigorous, and there had to be like a. Uh, reference location sampled as well, um, but, you know, just grabbing. Bacteria and, you know, nitrate samples or something isn't righteous.
Well, I I. Personally, I just don't know if it gives us the definition of. Specifics, what we.
But that's what it's there for. Um, to be, there's a hole in the ground to be.
Yeah, I think that's so, yeah, I mean, it's still there.
We could at least. Tap some kind of line, this is what it is. And do what we can per house and then see how it is. In ten years or whatever. At least be a place to start.
Yeah, and I can talk to G H D more about, um, the the monitoring well, so. Uh, there, there are a couple that we installed. For monitoring water quality, but most of them were installed to monitor groundwater levels, but I think you can still grab. Singles out of them for one more time.
I should, um, know the answers to these questions, but. You're asked to say to replace your two bedroom sized system with a three bedroom sized system, I realize that there's a lot of dynamics that probably vary. Property to property, but if you on your single parcel are asked to install a larger system that includes a larger tank and larger leach fields.
Yeah, yeah.
So is there a possibility that we end up just? You know, sort of accidentally decreasing building envelopes too much, um. Are they can people install appropriately large septic systems?
Yeah. And, you know, and I, and I think the, the concern of, I'm not as concerned about septic tank size. So maybe, you know, maybe it's only the leach field we address, because smaller tanks can just be pumped more often. Uh, and and we are, you know, that is certainly something that our O W T S program would pick up. Um, you know, as long as they have the leach field size for. Or what we need it to be.
Let's just. Have to make sure of different points, if you're thinking back, I have a different point as well, so, okay, I will keep that. Uh. I guess I'm just gonna say this, you know, thinking about Tristan's comment about demographics, I think it's also worth considering just. Unique view shed. You know, offered by houses in Trinidad, right? And I think that that not everybody. Sort of nefariously designates. Regions of their home as offices or dens or whatever, I think that, you know, there's plenty of circumstances where. They really do have a sixteen hundred square foot one bedroom house, and a whole lot of spaces from which to enjoy, you know, use, and I don't. I agree, I don't really wanna get. Sort of detail oriented of defining a bedroom, and what's notably a bedroom versus what isn't, and I also don't wanna give people. Some benefit of the doubt, okay, that, uh. Yeah, there's a lot of. Reviews off it, not everybody is turning something that could be a bedroom into one. inherent risk of making. Those types of stuff.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree, I, you know, that I would not recommend, you know. Defining every room that could be a bedroom as a bedroom, like, and and a lot of communities do do that, um. And but I I would not recommend that, because I I don't think that's the case, um.
I guess that that would be why I would oppose, you know, the. The option you also sort of opposed, which is facing O W T S as requirements as per footage, because there are in fact. Plenty of problems with. Footage that really don't actually house sleeping quarters or kitchens or what have you.
I just think they have a higher potential, so it's just, it's more of a factor, factor of safety thing.
Oh, that was gonna be my question, it was about safety factor, actually, so. There is some sort of inherent safety factor in each existing system, is that true, right? Like, if you install a one bedroom system. It's probably overdesigned by some percentage.
Yeah, I mean, I did notice when I was looking at regulations, um, some communities allow smaller tanks, um. And and there was loads for the number of bedrooms in Humboldt County, but some require bigger. So I don't, you know. And the state has O W T S policy, and so each jurisdiction has to meet those standards, but clearly, there there's a lot of variations in those.
But I guess to your point, Humboldt County requires hundred fifty gallons per day for better. Which. I don't know, most people use that, but I would doubt it, yes.
Most, most people do not.
Yeah.
Some use more.
But, yeah, right. Um. So, under the new. Interpretation of the rules, D H's rules, okay, so you have. Say you have what we know currently as a two bedroom house. And say it's even, we even have planned on file. They built this into a two bedroom house. Can those people? Revert one of those bedrooms and say, oh, that's not a bedroom anymore, and then build a one bedroom A D U?
Yes.
So that, okay, that's what we're.
But I think. To maybe carry it a little bit further is if. They don't remove the bedroom. And build a one bedroom A D U, so now they have three bedrooms, the system has to be. Resized, right? Is that correct?
Yes, but potentially a separate kitchen.
Well, you know, yeah, I mean, it, that's, that's a question, whether or not we wanna. Use kitchens or bedrooms as the criteria for, uh, you know, permitting. And it looks like most. At least what information you've given us from other counties or areas, they use bedrooms. Or combination of bedrooms and. And lot of of development size versus kitchens. I know we went through that whole thing about the size of the pipes, or the drains in the kitchens, and whether or not you had, uh. Gas lines or two twenty lines, I mean, it got really complicated, but, yeah. But I mean, that's, that is a possibility, I suppose.
Yeah, and I think that's why, uh, it does seem like a lot of communities require. Higher flow for that first bedroom, and I I think that's to account for the kitchen.
Which kind of exists, yeah.
You also have to full time use. Where the other ones can be part time used. But square footage covers it all, really. Uh. Potential, like you said, potential in the future, and. That it just says. What we're, this is what we do, this is the way we do.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a perfect system, but, I mean, yeah, I think it's, it's valid, I mean, it has validity.
Uh, I guess, given what, all the things we've discussed, um, I'm in favor of the second options. Given that it's quite simple to implement. And I think. So, I think we could like talk through a number of scenarios where that option will still. Keep us pretty well covered, like, say someone has a. Three bedroom house currently. With a three bedroom O W T S. They wanna undesignate one of their bedrooms, and now it's a two bedroom house, and they wanna. Build an eight of one bedroom A D U. There's still two bedroom O W T S for the main residence plus. Another extra bedroom for the A D U, the main residence probably isn't gonna be maxing out those. Two bedrooms. So the system can probably still, in all likelihood, it's still functioning just fine. I guess what I'm. More hesitant of is the scenario I just asked about, where it's a two bedroom house. They undesignate a bedroom and build an A D U, and then it's. Two bedroom, a one bedroom house and a one bedroom A D U just on a two bedroom.
That's my primary concern too, is the the two one bedroom units on a two bedroom system is really the primary thing that concerns.
Yeah.
And I I would be comfortable with number two.
And it's simple.
Can you say it last time again, sorry?
Uh, what concerns me most is two one bedroom units on a two bedroom septic system. Uh, because it really doesn't provide much factor of safety, um. You know, if you look at just average household size, you're gonna get more than four people in there, just based on that. Um, and so that's, that's really the the scenario that concerns me as well.
So, next scenario. Two bedroom house. One bedroom A D U with a two. Bedroom system. Do they have to upgrade?
Yes, they would need a three bedroom system, and and that would be under, you know, under this new interpretation of D E H, that would be true as well. You have to have it sized for.
Okay, so what what was a little confusing to me is when we say require the primary dwelling still to have at least a two bedroom O W T S. That's the minimum, but if I'm building a three bedroom house, I have to have a three bedroom system.
Yes, yes, and so that's why it's the minimum.
Right, okay, so if I have a three bedroom house and I build a one bedroom A D U. I have to upgrade the system.
Give me a four bedroom system, correct?
Or the alternative is you undesignate one of your bedrooms in the three bedroom house. And then your three bedroom house becomes a two.
Well, that's problematic to me, I think that that I think is walking down a very slippery slope.
I think that.
I mean, that's my personal opinion, sure.
Yeah, no, I guess, well, that's what we're up against.
Yeah.
And and that will happen, you know, I I I don't. There aren't that many, there aren't as many two bedroom systems in town as there are three bedroom systems, and, um. There are. Yeah, I, I, there are, and and most of our detached living spaces that we've approved have been three bedrooms, and so. They could easily convert that detached living space into an A D U and and have the two bedroom. Primary unit and one bedroom A D U, and then three bedroom se- septic system, you know, and and that. If the system is sized appropriately, then there's a reserve area. I'm not, I I think that's probably, okay.
I mean, it seems to me. That's. Like Santa Cruz County. Policy seems pretty decent then, right? Because it's it's two hundred fifty gallons per day for the first bedroom of each unit. I'm just reading from the summary on page thirty three. I think so, that sort of, that sort of addresses it, right, because. Your system's going to be somewhat overdesigned. Because that A D U, even if it's one bedroom, suddenly requires two hundred fifty gallon per day system rather than just getting countered to seventy five gallon per day system. So it seems to me like Santa Cruz County's probably got it. Right, so they. Stick for the first bedroom of each unit.
Yeah, and so that's what, that's basically what the county was previously doing. But at an even higher rate, because it was three hundred gallons a day for for two bedrooms, and, you know, and I think. I think a hundred and fifty gallons, certainly after the first two bedrooms, a hundred and fifty gallons a day per bedroom is probably oversizing it. Because how, people don't usually use seventy five gallons a day, and you don't usually have two people in a bedroom. Beyond, you know.
Yeah, but that's why we don't have cholera outbreaks and. The one, you know, what to do with septic.
Yeah, 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 I mean.
So, what can we do for you to see?
Um. Well, I'd like to do some more research into this topic, I'd like to talk to environmental health, I'd like to see what they're basing this on, I'd like to talk to G H D. Um, and maybe some other. Experts, geologists, or, you know, environmental specialists, um. And get get. Opinion, so it'd be one place to start, um. And then if there are particularly, um, you know, it doesn't sound like there's a strong consensus in terms of. A particular option you wanna pursue, um, you know, if there were, I could go find more examples and give you, you know, random options there, but.
I like the testing wells and making, if you have a monitoring well, use it. And that would create a baseline. For future, whatever, whatever we decide. If it's justified. But that's, I like the sound of that.
Okay, well, I can look into, I can get some cost estimates for, you know, what it would take to send some. There, you know, it's easy to get lab, lab costs.
Yeah, I I wrote down a couple of things and and be free to add to it, but one of them was, it sounded like. So clearly, we have a recommendation, we wanna make sure that the D E H contract is updated. And it also sounds like we would be interested in what other Humboldt cities and the. Non incorporated sections of Humboldt do. I think I know what Humboldt County does, but I'm not sure about the cities. Uh, there still might be a question as to whether or not we should be using even bedrooms as a criteria, maybe it's something we wanna switch to. Kitchens, I'm not sure if that's. We have to decide on that, what's the correct criteria between those, I guess. Uh, issue of maybe trying to use, uh, test wells, feasibility of using test wells for monitoring affluent quali- uh, qual- quality, and you just indicated that you try to get some more information on that. Um, anything else that you want, or, uh, want staff to maybe look into before we are able to move ahead? I, I, I don't know that we focused on one or two of the uh, actions at this point. I mean, I'm, I'm open to hearing more about if staff can come back. Your comments or recommendations?
Um, I don't have any, I guess I don't have anything else to ask for. I have a comment, but if we get Trevor's laundry list first.
Well, that, that's, that's what I just wrote down. So if there's anything else on the, on the recommendation list?
I also added that I'm, I'm going to get in touch with DEH and see what kind of data or justification they might have for making that decision. Um, and then I'd also like to, um, get GHD's input as well.
I think, I mean, in my opinion, um, probably getting GHD's inputs may be more valuable than figuring out what other cities and localities are doing, because we've got such a unique situation here with, you know, the the sandy soils and good drainage and all of that. We do really have a truly unique situation, and it's nice to know probably what other, uh, localities are doing, interest stations are doing, but like knowing our situation is truly unique. I think that, uh, policy ought to reflect that uniqueness rather than relying too much on what's going on elsewhere in the county.
Actually, really, probably who I, who I should really talk to is G. Boni, um, who's an engineering geologist who designs a lot of the systems in Trinidad. Just slips to the least.
Uh, anything else?
Uh, yeah, I guess I wanted to, two, two notes, uh, I mean, soils in this part of Trinidad are great for septic. So as in my part of Trinidad.
True, yeah. Or they, they're much more variable.
They're much more.
Much more variable, yes.
Yeah. Uh, maybe more indicative of a lot of other parts of. Um, and then I guess my other, my final point is uh, I mean, we are I guess I feel like I just, I don't want to enact anything or adopt some policy that makes it too incredibly onerous for anyone to build an ADU, because, I mean, we are in the state of California where there's a housing shortage, and we do have some pressure, although not as much as other municipalities develop more housing units. And, you know, if we can with our OWTS systems, um, to handle more people than, you know, I, there, we do have some obligation to do that as a.
And, and beyond that, it doesn't yes, it may make building ADUs more onerous, but it might also downright make it impossible if you decrease the building envelope. It's just a small area, you can't actually build ADU because your leash field is too much.
Yeah, no, I, I think that was the situation previously, is that it would make it very difficult for most people to have ADUs, and that was sort of in some ways a comforting fact, because, you know, part of it is these minute, and we'll see what HCD says about the ordinance, but I think, you know, the idea of allowing ministerial approvals of 25-foot tall conditions is a little scary in Trinidad, um. So I, you know, I think that made it, you know, a little bit easier to say, yes, that's allowed to use, but you take that limitation away from it. You might think about the ordinance a little bit differently. But, but I do agree that, I, you know, like I said, I was hoping that DH would relax it to some degree, um, like, like point bullet number two is sort of what I was hoping they would do with their regulations, um. But they went beyond that, and that's where I went. Is that really right?
Back to item number one from Richard's list, I would say that maybe you don't we can relax their restrictions, and maybe as our health officer, you demand that they relax their restrictions.
True, I guess we could have taken that if, yeah, we're, we're looking at it, um. Now, it's easier to be more strict than someone as opposed to less strict, um, you know, I think we really have to show justification why that would be allowed when the health department wasn't allowing it. So that's one sense, but, but true, we, we could have gone the other way, and I didn't really think about that.
My broader point is that it doesn't need to be unidirectional, where essentially they are employees, right?
Yes.
Okay, any final comments, words, uh, or comments or questions or clarifications, uh? I hear you're not all turn it over to the public for any public comment? And I don't see anyone from the public here, so thank you very much for the input, everyone, um. Brainwaking. Okay, we'll move on then to the next agenda item, which is, um, commissioner reports. Any commissioner reports for the CD?
Yeah, I, I have one from the trail committee last night, um, which then took me kind of down a rabbit hole today with the Sureye Management Plan. And just looking at it, and I would highly recommend that on the planning commission for Trinidad, that we all read it. It's very important piece of work, and it just, the amount of work that has been gone into it, I've seen your name on it, I saw a lot of names of people that have gone now. But a huge amount of work has gone into that plan. And then the history around here is just really amazing. And we really have, uh, you know, we have a we have to be respectful of everything around here. I mean, it's, there are some horrendous things have happened, and read the plan. Uh, and we're the planning commission, we should read the plan, and so that we can treat everybody with respect. So that's, okay, so, no, sorry, I got off on a soapbox there, uh, trail committee. Things are happening, uh, we, we looked at signposts, uh, by pounding a metal sign in and covering with wood, we're working on, uh, a prototype for, for to see, everybody, everybody agreed on it. They, they were, they were excited, or, I don't know about excited, but everybody agreed. And everybody was there from all the different groups, um. It's an exciting time, it sounded like things are, things are happening a little bit, and people are wanting to work together. So, uh, anyway, that's kind of uh, it, in a nutshell, we're going to have another one in September, but we're going to be try, another meeting, but we're going to be trying to kind of still be working on prototypes, and you'll, you'll be seeing it, trying to get it all looking, looking uniform. Something to be proud of. Or at least be happy seeing, and it, please, if you have input, always, you know, take a picture, anywhere you're at, take a picture and see how we can make it better.
Okay. Any other, uh, commissioner reports? Okay. Pretty much, um, next item is staff report.
Um, so in between other things that always keep coming up, um, I'm trying to work on the REAP grant task, which is the annexation study and application forms and FAQs for the website, so, because that grant runs out in May. I'm trying to focus on that, um, but I keep getting applications coming in, um, so next month, we've got two, we've got our first two STR exceptions, so these are STRs that are adjacent to other STRs. Probably not a big deal because they're on scenic drives, so much properties. Those will be on next month's agenda along with, um, coastal development permit for a new broadband cable, the digital 299 project is coming into, to Trinidad. And, uh, coastal development permit for, uh, detached living space conversion shipped to an office. I have another application that's in, but I'm not. Yeah, very busy. And I have to get the ADU or next done.
Uh, speaking of workload, um, I did as I should say, I did get a couple of inquiries as to status, the current status of the, um, general plan update. And, um, I admit that, uh, I probably don't know the most recent update myself. And I was wondering, I, I don't want to create any more work, but I was wondering if there's a simple way in which the status of the general plan update could be maybe graphically or somehow just shown on the, uh, website under the planning commissioner somewhere, so that people can just go right there and see exactly where we're at. I don't have a, an absolute solution, but I'm hoping that something could be done very simply. But it might help towards giving the public knowledge of what we're doing, number one, and then number two, to, to demonstrate that we are moving forward on it. So.
Yeah, yeah, it's one of those things, you know.
Could you make the?
Very, very unfortunate to keep getting in the way.
Yeah, well, that, that's the problem. I, I understand that, and
Could you make little steps, see, big? Now, if you're using a graph, make it the things that are
Huge, huge progress.
Because it is, it is really a big deal. Uh, there's a lot of work goes into a little step.
Yeah, no, it, it does, I, um, you know, I, I did, I think I probably mentioned in the previous staff report, I, I did get comments back from, from the Yoroc tribe on the cultural resources element, and we've got a lot of comments on the coastal resilience action plan, um. So I, you know, I I think I have what I need to do a new draft of that, um, that's, that's high. And there's the safety element, which is still kind of waiting for the coastal resilience work, um. So, those are kind of the two outstanding things.
I, I was, uh, looking at an old set of minutes at some point, and was surprised to see that there was a city planner and an assistant city planner.
That's pretty old set of minutes.
Yeah, fair enough, but, but I guess I I mention it because you're pretty busy, and it, it might appear I'm hiring people tonight, but it might be nice, since there's the budgetary process going on, to look at getting assistant city bad, as our assistant city, uh, city planner.
Yes, no, that's absolutely it, and there is budget for it, um, and I, we do have now a couple of, um, we have a, uh, social planner, which is the middle one, and, uh, whatever the entry level planner is called at SHN. So I do have some help, you know, it's getting them up to speed. Um, you know, we've had a lot of problems with, um, you know, I, I have had help before and, and left, um, a bit bigger and better things, and so, yeah, that's been an issue, and then hiring people, it's been an issue, but, yeah, because everybody a lot of people are actually trying to hire plumbers.
Yeah, I think it's my, I probably just gave it like, you're clearly at your saturation point.
Yeah.
So when there's top-down pressure to make more progress in the general plan, well, put your money where your mouth is and, and hire more staff.
They have added extra budget in past years, and it's just a lack of, of the actual people to do it, and really like to just get, get some stuff done so that it's not this pile, and, and so that we can actually work on things we can work on.
Did a grant writer, did that get taken care of in Trinidad?
Yeah, so Becky has a, is training her recruits. Yeah, so Angela, if you remember Angela, um, she's, she's gonna take Becky's place, she's and I mean, the city does have a lot more staff, so I'm, you know, Anton's been helping me with sending out notices, um, which, when I first started, the city did that, and, you know, we've taken over a lot of those administrative tasks, um, you know, doing packets and things like that. So the city has a little bit more staff to maybe start doing some of that work, um. You know, Jennifer's helping me with, with some grant things, um, so we're, we're plugging away, but it's
Well, that's, that's, that is a good point, and, uh, this is, uh, I think next month, they start their budget discussions, so would be a bad idea to put our word in for the city council to say, hey, make sure that contract, you know, has the proper funding for what we need to do.
And, you know, a lot of what I have to do is would be under the LCP grant, so it's grant funded.
Well, I, I would guess that maybe a lot of the funding is already there, because if you're just getting pulled up to work on these people's projects, that's not.
Well, and then there's that, there's the applications. You know, some years we get three or four applications in a year, and, you know. There's a lot.
It's a lot, right? Which doesn't draw down our budget.
Yeah, because the
It just takes a bit of time.
Yeah, it just takes a bit.
Takes a lot of question.
Anything else?
Oh, and then we do have two, two applications, um, on Mill Creek Lane for out-of-city GHD is going to run the model water system model with those, so that, that's also a new process that we're learning, and, and then the city's working on water rate study as well, which I
Okay, um, again, no public comment here, uh, then anything that we want to either add, subtract, or amend on future agenda items? List has been kind of stacked for the last couple of ones.
Yeah, implementing the design.
That's all that. Okay. Your last minutes, last comments, questions?
We, sorry, the, um, we're opting against workshops to discuss trail, there's no workshops, we're obligated to have.
Oh, I'm sorry, workshops on
We're talking about some workshops for like looking at, uh, solutions to trail issues. There's no, we're not obligated to have any workshop.
That, that's right. I think it was just agendaized on the city council meetings, because considering the council's workload with the budget and water rates, they're going to be
It was suggested.
I would think that it was nuts.
I don't know if it'll implement it, right? Okay. All right, and then if there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
It's you.
And it's you.